I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have our program review, one of two, with Brian Kozlowski from Wright Tech Center.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I always appreciate so much being invited to speak on our Wright Tech. I would like to start off with our review of our mission. We'll back up a couple slides. Oops, sorry. Department of Members School District, Division of Preparations, Careers, Post-Second Education, Life, Long Learning. In my presentation today, I'm having to put in operations and maintenance. This is a prime example of the industry partners that we have. So Wright Tech from Center, as we went through a little bit of a rebranding a few years ago, the Wright Tech is the Advanced Career Tech Programs, and then Wright Academy is the ALC. So just starting our review with enrollment, you can see that I believe that we have the highest enrollment to date in the last 30 years. Delano, so that's at 83, and this was October 1st numbers. So since October 1, we've lost three students, you know, when the semester changed and drive measures changed and everything, some of the students. So moving three from the 1st of October till now is a pretty good number. So we're right now at 80 of the current leaders. And then February 1, when we do our enrollment count again, then we take the October 1 numbers and average them with February 1 numbers, and we figure out your FY25 allocation percentages. So then this is where we stand as far as the all-member access to industry trends. So this year, we're at the third highest enrollment since we've had since I think back in 2006 area. So within the last 30 years, this year is a really good year for us, and about 725, 730 students participating in the Advanced Career Tech Programs. So this is where you can see with all blocks for the Delano, where they line up. And now Delano is a first block school along with St. Michael Elverville. We do open up our classes throughout the entire day. If there were a student that it would work out for their schedule, and if they had a schedule conflict, and if the district would allow them to transport themselves in one of the other classes throughout the A block 2, which is Big Lake and Buffalo, and block 3, which is Annandale, Howard Lake, Maple Lake, and Monticello. But all of the classes are open to all of the students, all of the, all of the blocks of the day. And so you can see that for our newest program, we have six Delano students enrolled for our first block class. And the heavy equipment operations and maintenance program, it's in its inaugural year, and we have 22 students. And so the first year, we opened it up to all of the districts, just to get it off the, we're also, we have 22 students we started the year with, and we're down to 20 students in heavy equipment now, at this point in time of the year. That's, that's a good number. So the Wright Academy, I think we only have two or three students from Delano that are attending the academy. And so of the, over the numbers in the past few years, the mid 90s is a good number for us as far as enrollment, and that's grade 7 through 12. You know, enrollment drives our revenue too. So if we were to fall below that 90 is when we're concerned, and when we get into the upper 90s, it's really nice, you can kind of see the trends there, that we're doing all right with the academy enrollment. So program development, this is where I'll highlight our heavy equipment operations and maintenance program. And for us, it really takes a solid year and a half before we're able to get a program up and running. So we were approached by the Local 49ers, you know, two, two years ago. And then we started that process because with the registration guides, we have to get it into the registration guides, and we have to have the enrollment and the interest, student interest. And then once it's approved to go ahead with the program, well, then we hope that we're able to find an instructor. And so what we were able to do for our heavy equipment program is one of our two work-based learning instructors, our work-based learning, our on-the-job training and our youth apprentice numbers did decline just a little bit. And so we had an opportunity with a background of that teacher coming from transportation industry. So this is his second year with us. He's teaching work-based learning in the afternoon, but he has the first block class of the heavy equipment operations and maintenance program. So we talked about partnerships. This was a big day for us in middle of August, when the Fane and the Bite Heavy Equipment rolled in. And we had, prior to that, we'd gone to the city of Buffalo and had to request a conditional use permit from the zoning and planning, and then went to the city council, and they gave us their blessing, to where we created just a little over a half acre of a sandbox. And so the dozer and the, and the dump trucks and everything, they leveled off the ground, and they brought in, I don't know how many yards, dump trucks, loads of sand, because it's the sand that the heavy equipment, the students, what they have equipment, is using to move around. And then we brought in 40, let me go to the next slide. Then you can see there's the Bite and the Fane Equipment working to get the sandbox ready. And then PCI Rhodes and MCI McLaren, PCI, yeah, PCI Rhodes, they brought in 40 of those 12-foot J-barriers. And so we have three bays set up within that sandbox for the pieces of the heavy equipment to operate. And then Rachel Contract, Contracting brought in two shipping containers, so that's where we store the, the track loaders. So then this was another big day. We had Ziegler Cat showed up with two track loaders and a mini excavator, brand new, never been used before, and for our students to use for the class. And so the amount of safety training that the students go through in the classroom is just amazing, and with the OSHA 10 training and everything else, and they're orientated to the student, to the students, to the equipment. They have e-stops on them where the instructor can, in a push of a button, control the equipment and shut them down, and the students have radios on with the instructor. So the students that are in the operating, in the equipment can hear the instructor with instructions, and the students can ask questions back and forth as well. So we have six students outside, three in the equipment, three outside, what is instructor. And then the other students are in the classroom. We have a pair of professionals in the classroom that is working with simulators. So we have four of our own simulators in the classroom, and then we have two simulators around long, the Local 49ers, who are a total of six. So the instruction is taking place on computers and laptops with online instruction. We work with Minnesota Virtual Academy for providing an online curriculum along with what was developed by Local 49ers. And that's so they're getting instruction through the online curriculum along with our instructor, and they're working on the classroom, and then they're outside working on the heavy equipment. They did pick up the heavy equipment December 1st. We had anticipated it being colder prior then, but we were able to extend it out to that. And the arrangements are already in place where March 1st, the equipment will be back for us to use the last three years, the last three months of the year. And then we'll be getting into the maintenance part this spring too. And they do all the preventative maintenance and all the grease points and all of the track adjustments and everything that they're learning throughout the course of their, of their time. So back in September, we had a big grand opening. And so the Local 49ers have an operating engineer's pathway. So the students that are successfully completing this program, if they choose, they can go on to the 49ers Training Site in Hankley, and then credits that they've earned will transfer with them, and they'll have a head start on their careers. And there's quite a few of the students, I would say probably 60%, 60% of the students have indicated their interest in pursuing this as a career. So that's a really good number for 21 of our programs. So then that is just a banner, and that was our grand opening day. And then there's our three pieces of equipment. And then that is our inaugural class, and we were able to take a nice photo of the students on that grand opening day. And then those are the premier sponsors, I guess I would call them. We had a heavy equipment rodeo one day at the Ames Construction Site in Woodbury, where the students got to actually operate the big bulldozer and the big payloader and the big backhoe, and spent the day there on a Saturday with them. And would this video work, Mr. Shane?
Uh, I will try.
Click on it. Take just a few minutes and watch this, please. I suppose I can do the narration, Mr. Carson, our principal, is the fine job with, with the narration and putting the videos together. So you can see that we just have some tires out there for the students to manipulate with the, with the mini excavator. And there, the students are learning how to use the equipment. And we have some other activities that we have for them. We have forks for one of the track loaders. And this just simulates with a couple of standards and a poly pole, where the students are looking into a box. And then this shows a picture of simulators, and the simulators are identical to the controls that the students experience in the actual equipment in the sandbox. We do have one mini excavator that is a traveling one for us, that we do take on the road when we go to trade shows and career fairies and stuff as well. And this was, this is a picture from the heavy equipment rodeo at Ames Construction Site. And then, next slide, just a real quick overview on finance. I've been living it for seven years. I've been at Wright Tech, this is my seventh year, and I am optimistic that things are going to get better. And so I thank the boards so much and the superintendents for working through this challenging time with us. You know, we experienced facilities challenges, and we still have facility challenges. And then COVID really hit us hard with the academy enrollment. So that was really what, you know, facilities continues to be a challenge. But the support from member districts is going to be what really saves us, and so I can't thank our members enough. And I know how challenging it is for you as well. Representative McDonald was able to attend the, with a Senate bonding tour at Wright Tech Center last Thursday. And the chair of the committee had commented as far as what kind of support that we're able to receive from member districts. And Representative McDonald shared that our, that our member districts struggle financially as well, and that we really need the help from the state. And so the House bonding tour was September 15, and the Senate bonding tour was last week, January 18. And the both went well. We're hoping to, well, we will be presenting those two bills at the legislation again in February. And we are continuing to ask for everybody's support in that endeavor. So financial picture has been bleak. Facilities have been difficult, and we know that we are, we're getting close to that point where that fund balance could be available to start climbing. There'll be more dollars hopefully available, not from the state, from our LPFM. Next slide. And so those are this, the House File 2069 and Senate File 1856, where we're asking the legislation for $9.5 million to help with our facilities improvements. And then any questions from me, anything that I've shared with you tonight? And I, hopefully, you all know too, at any point in time, if you have any questions, an email or a phone call away. So I really appreciate the questions, and I appreciate Mr. Gary's support on our board, and Rachel, and Amy, whenever you attended, and anybody else, if they ever have to as an alternate, that's a title straight forward to work with. And every group superintendent, so just thank you.
Brian, I have a question about the heavy equipment. Did you have to carry different insurance? Or do the students' parents have to sign specific waivers for that? I know you have some other kind of more, I don't want to say hazardous, but more challenging type of programs around welding, et cetera. What does that look like?
Our insurance was, one thing that they had asked was for the e-stops, and we offered up as well as the reading recommendations. You have the students and the parents sign that release. As much as we would like to believe that that is rock solid, you know, that's why we make certain that we do everything we can, you know, as far as liability, to limit that, with three barriers, you know, the equipment operated in three different bays.
Yep.
The one that handles the other. You know, and so yes, they may be answering questions on us for those instances. You know, and then when we do explain too, the high risk that we do have, you know, with our other programs, what they have with the, with the home, you know, we have students going around with the rafters and the machining, and with the auto lifts, and with the, you know, we have, you know, those are real world, real exercises that the students are able to participate in. And so our insurance companies understand that, but they are protecting themselves as well as us.
Yeah. Great turnout, my goodness. I can only imagine that's going to grow over the years.
Our hope is now when registration's are due March 1st, and the final registration are due April 1st. And our goal is to increase that to 60 students.
Fantastic.
We'll see where we end up with that.
Yeah.
And then we'll figure out where we're going to go with the work-based learning position, you know, as far as where we will meet those needs of the students that are involved in that. We do have other teachers that do have work-based learning licenses, so there might be some internal shifts, because Drew Banksen is our instructor for heavy equipment. He's spent a year there now, and we want to come there and grow that program.
Are there opportunities when those students are done to go and work for some of these companies? Do they have internships? Or does this, like, do students understand that this is such a great opportunity for them?
I really believe so. We have one young man that's already employed by Fane.
Wow.
And so there's, they know the experiences that they're gaining, and with all of the sponsors that we have for that program, they know how important it is. You know, when we look at starting any other programs, this is what it really took for us to do that, because we looked at our financial picture. We met with the advisory board on June 5th, and they said, well, what's it going to take? And I said, I'll be honest with you, financially, without your support, it's not going to happen. And they said, well, we're going to make it happen.
That's fantastic.
Brian, for your house files, do you guys have hearing dates? I can't remember if you said or not.
But no.
Do you guys have dates for your house file and Senate file hearing dates?
No, we don't. We're hopeful of being granted a hearing.
Okay.
And I'll be certain to share that with everybody. I'm hopeful that we'll have a contingency that will come down and help us testify on behalf of the importance of the Tech Center as the last true location cooperative in the state.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. That was a pleasure.
All right. And up next is our second, the History Day, Ms. O'Donnell and Ms. Campbell.
Hi. Thank you for being on the stage. I'm trying to come and chat with you. I'm Tris Ann Light, she's in sixth grade, and it's later today.
I'm Heidi O'Donnell. I am a talent development coordinator for, for all.
Yeah, and we just want to give you kind of two-fold, just kind of a rundown again of what History Day is, and just the background of it, and the history of History Day. And then Bobby, so I have Oliver Bird, and they're the ones that went to Nationals last year. And we, they never had an opportunity to come and tell you about their experience in, at Nationals in Washington, DC. And so just to reiterate the importance of History Day again, just hope for them to go over their experiences, some highlights, and just strengthen the program that we have and that we do. So in the students do History Day in sixth grade and in eighth grade, it's part of our curriculum. It is, we start in September by talking about the annual theme. They get a topic by October. They are researching, we go to Delano and Head of Income Libraries. And then it overtakes my classes, like, end of November. And right now, in sixth grade, we are grading those projects right now. So they have been working since then to September and creating their projects. And so I feel like we just ended, but now we're already, like, grading this year's projects. And so just so much work. I have 12 projects in sixth grade right now, from a board, an exhibit board, to a website, to documentary, and a performance. And just full of analyzing and historical accuracy and content, and proving why it is still important. So that's all part of, for this project.
Yeah, same thing. I work with Tris Ann, and I also work with Rachel Holmes, who is the eighth grade advanced language arts teacher too. So their theme this year is turning points in history, so you can about imagine all the different turning points that take place. They like us to start about 20 years back, just so that way it is more historical, and we've seen more of the long-term effect based on some of these topics the students have chosen. There's some really interesting ones this year, everything from what the Nintendo Game Crash of 1983, to some women's suffragists, to the Tylenol murders, to the creation of 911. Yeah, 911 Emergency Call System, the Cuban Missile Crisis, and some, let's see here, we have Triangle Shirt Waste Fire.
I mean, the stuff, and the students pick these topics. They pick these topics, and we're just continually blown away every single year at the depth of these topics that they choose, and that's amazing.
It is. It's really something. And so currently this year, we have 37 competing projects in sixth and eighth grade. So it's a much bigger number than we normally have. We have two classes of advanced eighth grade language arts this year, and then a very big class of sixth grade as well. You guys are all welcome to come view our local competition on Tuesday, February 13. It is at the high school. It's in the morning, and I know that we have some school group members as judges, but we also have some of the students as student judges too. And then Cory, I think your daughter's also a student judge as well. So we like to ask our former History Day students come judge with our adult judges as well, our community members, because as students, you guys know the process better than anybody, right?
Love you.
Oh, all of it. The joy. And, and so it's a really powerful day for not only our students, but the families to get to see what their kids have been working on, but also the community members that come in and judge for us too. I mean, we have former teachers, we have board members, we've had, you know, politicians. We, we have just a wide variety of people come in and judge. Also, judges from the National History Day competition come to and judge for us as well. And I know that Delano's program is always really highly revered in the world of History Day, and you guys, well, it's on the map nationally too. So why don't we give these gentlemen a chance to talk about a little bit of their experiences and highlights from Washington, DC?
Yeah. So we went in June, we went just in last year in June, and we were there for about six days. Yeah, go ahead and tell us some experiences.
Yeah, well, it was a really fun experience.
Gentlemen, why don't we have you come up to the podium where we can, you're going to be on TV now, so.
Yeah, it was a very fun experience, of course, and we were very thankful for the opportunity. We did, we got to do, we got to see many sights there, of course, and it was a great experience.
Yeah, I got to see a lot of different historical sites, because we were in Washington, DC. I got to see, like, the White House, the Capitol. It was super fun, because I was all about history there, which was like kind of the point of why they chose the National History Day, or National, or Washington, which was super cool. And I also got to meet a bunch of fun people, and people from, like, all over the country, and it was super fun.
Yeah, and it was really cool just being able to present on a topic on national level, and be able to see other people there from other states. We actually did very well there. We actually got one of the lunch, you know, from, how many pictures?
Two.
200?
2,000.
Oh, 2,000.
What were you guys talking about?
It was on electric cars.
Awesome. I think I knew that from last year.
Yeah. And just, I mean, one highlight too, who did you meet at the tour of the Capitol?
Yeah, we met a speaker from the car, he was a student.
And they stopped and had a conversation with the boys, and just, and people were just blown away that he gave them, he gave them about five minutes of his time. It was just happened, just by chance, that he was in the same spot that we were. And he stood and talked to them, and then people just bombarded the boys afterwards, wanting to know who they were and how they got so much of his time and all of this stuff. And Bobby actually called him out on one of his facts one time. He's like, I think you need to check your facts. And so it was super, super impressive how they held themselves and how they presented it. And they represented Delano with such pride and honor, and it was kind of on the map, so.
Now you have an FBI file.
Yeah. But hey, yeah, any questions about the program or for the boys or anything?
How would you say that just the process of doing, you know, as your, as your teacher alluded to, just the preparation and the research? Were there tools and tricks that you feel like now you'll be able to take in as you advance in your studies as well as into your professional career, or?
Yeah, we learned many tools on the project that we can do, just like later projects in school, if we'd like to. We have to make a lot of documents. We did cite our sources. That was the first time I made a little off the team, yeah.
Well, I noticed that, like, the performance was a lot like speech, and so that's really fun, because now, like, I went to speech and I was like, hey, this is exactly like what I did last year in history. So that was cool.
Congratulations, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, man.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. It's got all of the affairs of the board, the financials and all of that. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, second.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, or any opposed? I'm going to hurry. Motion passes. Next up is, if I find it. It's down here somewhere. Resolution for acceptance of gifts. And I gotta make that paper. Not that big. Whereas, American Online Giving, $866.57 for Delano Public Schools charities, aid foundation, $99 for Delano Elementary School, Zoller Photography, $800 for Delano Elementary School, DES Pi, $179 for Delano Elementary Field Trips, and $46,629.61 for Delano Elementary Fayette Equipment and First Grade Books, charities, aid foundation, American, America? American? $82 for Delano Intermediate School, Box Tops for Education, $43.60 for Delano Intermediate Schools, Zoller Photography, $800 for Delano High School, Box Tops for Education, $28.20 for Delano High School, Velocity Aquatics, $750 for Touchpad, Delano Tigers Athletic Booster Club, $11,431.35 for football expenses, Delano Tigers Athletic Booster Club, $2,919.50 for JV Boys Hockey Coach, Delano Boys Hockey Team, $8,445 for Boys Hockey Expenses, General Federated Women's Club of Delano, $500 for Tennis Court Lights, Delano Tiger Athletic Booster Club, $4,514.3 for Girls Hockey Booster Paid Coaches, Delano Lions, $5,400 for DC, New York, and international trips, Wright Head and Co-operative, $1,200 for FY23 Scholarship, and the following for the Orange Crush Robotics Team, $326, $500 for Harwood, from Harwood's Body Shop, $1,000 from Berg Exterior Companies, $2,000 from the Loretto Lions lawful gambling account, and $3,000 from the Delano Lions. These gifts have generously been offered to be donated to the Delano Public School District with the conditions listed. with the conditions listed above. Do we have a motion for the acceptance of gifts?
I'll move.
Motion from Ryan. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Sarah. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Shouse.
Aye.
Excuse me, board member Johnson.
Aye.
Board member Black.
Aye.
Board member Deppa.
Aye.
And board member Gerke.
Aye.
Motion passes. Up next is personnel matters. On personnel matters, we also have the memorandum of agreement for the sixth grade field trip for next year. Do we have a motion to pass the personnel matters?
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, administrative reports. First up Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I will be very, very brief. I do not have a PowerPoint tonight. Most of the information that I shared with you in work session, our major areas that we're working on, is again, preparing for sessions in the strategic plan. I also shared that we're eventually going to embark in working with somebody with regards to branding and logo, our district, doing all of that piece, and then obviously moving forward to continue those sessions into the late spring with some other feedback portions, strategy groups, that will continue our strategic planning process. And with that, I will yield back my time to the board and ask if there's any other questions too as well.
Any questions for Superintendent Shane? Thank you. Up next is principals. We'll start with the intermediate school. Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening on behalf of the elementary school. Just a few quick updates, starting with our site-based team. Our site-based team has just kind of been quiet lately. One of the things we've done recently is review our behavior data. So once every other month, there's still Mr. and Mrs. behavior data to our site-based team, mostly looking at some of those little behaviors. And then we discuss any behavior trends or areas that we might want to improve. No need for action at this time. Our kids are doing awesome. Professional development. Last week, we had a couple of different professional development opportunities for our staff. Intermediate school staff kind of split up. Half of them went to the elementary school to do a press training, which is our reading training, have some tier one instruction. And then those non-reading teachers bring them to the intermediate school and we talk about some vocabulary instruction strategies with Dr. Plucker. I sat in on that session and it was wonderful. She always does a really great job with our teachers. And then at our tour, like start on Wednesday, my staff and I just spent some time really kind of unpacking our process for our student success team, which is the team that we use at the intermediate school to move kids between tiers. When we talk about MTSS, we look at our kids who in tier one maybe aren't doing very well. We want to move them into a more intense intervention, move them up to tier two. So this is the team that makes the decisions and reviews all the intervention data. Anyway, it's a hard process to maintain. There's a lot of communication loops that we have to keep track of, a lot of data tracking that needs to happen. So we had just some really good time as a staff at our tour, like start really looking at our process, making sure everybody understood it, looking at the areas where there was something for growth. So that was a really good time for our staff. And then in terms of our MTSS progress, we did do our fast screening in December, and I shared very briefly then that it went really well for our grades. Our total numbers, our final official numbers is that reading and math, our students are performing at 91% in the college pathway or low-risk categories, which is the highest that it's been since I've been there. They grew from 85% in both reading and math as they build in 1% in December, which is just fantastic. One area that I'd like to highlight is our sixth grade math. And she, they were 95% in the college pathway or low-risk. That's 135 kids in the college pathway, 170. Our sixth grade math teachers are Natalie Homer and Long-Term Self-Christ Daniels. And Natalie, that's her life, and she just does a wonderful job. And this is just evidence of just how hard they were going to do a wonderful job. So I'm really proud of our staff, our students. They're working hard and it's really paying off. Coming up in February then is I love during the intermediate school, so we'll do some activities around that. And then we're hoping we might finally get to take our fourth graders ice fishing. Tried to go last year, we had some weather-related issues. We're feeling very confident for this year, but gosh, if it doesn't look like 40 degrees next week. So we shall see. We always have the DNR go out and check up the ice and all the things before we head out. Maybe we have to cancel a little, but hopefully we'll get to take those kiddos out on the second of February. Any questions for me this evening? Any questions? Thank you.
Up next is Mr. Voight. Ah, that makes sense.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's my pleasure to be at the high school this evening. No, Mr. Voight has not grown nearly a foot, if you're not looking. My name is Jason Monkey. I teach high school science at the high school, and I'm here representing the high school with the capacity of an administrative intern, which I'm doing with Mr. Voight right now. Mr. Voight, apologize that he's unable to be present tonight because he is hosting an informational session for the students and families in preparation for the upcoming extration to the high school tonight. Important to note that there is another presentation next Monday at 6:30 in the pack for anyone to just enter that as well. With respect to registration, the site-based leadership team reviewed the registration timeline and further discussed two main points of emphasis with respect to courses. The first is Personal Finance, and the second is a new course titled Career Exploration. Personal Finance is a newly created graduation requirement for incoming ninth graders to be complete at some point in their 10 through 12th grade career. In anticipation of broadening interest and with allowance to use different teachers like fact, social studies, math teachers to teach that class, we are in the beginning stages of looking for a curriculum that can be universally deployed. An unintended benefit of this new legislation is that we expect to be able to offer more business courses throughout the scope and sequence of that department's offering due to the expansion of accepted licensed shirt areas. The second course is Career Exploration. And in my administrative internship, I will be leading a task force that's going to be designing this course basically from the ground up. It's all about beginning the process of students figuring out what their life might be like beyond formal education. Mr. Voight is particularly excited about this course, especially because the new resources will have our exposure to assist students and families in their identification and pursuit of individual goals. Stay tuned for more to come on that class. Finally, with respect to an academic update, our students recently completed their winter screening of the FAST assessments in both math and reading. For reading, in the fall, we had a score of 84% that were in the low-risk or college pathways category. And we actually went down to 78% for the winter, but the caveat of that was we saw about 60 kids who had not taken a test yet as of these numbers, due to the illnesses or being on or whatever else. Math scores were up from 84 to 86%, so a plus 2% change in math. That was a good sign as well. And remember, these are scores that represent of our seventh through 10th grade students. And finally, Mr. Baughlin and the rest of the administrative team is already working with teachers to develop options for our MCA testing schedule for the months of April, May. Has been discussed previously. DHS staff believes our biggest obstacle with MCA performance is relative to the culture of standardized testing within the Delano community. As such, we're looking for this ways to leverage the schedules that our students can focus these important measures and a manner that reduces conflicts and obstacles to the extent possible. This concludes my remarks on behalf of the high school. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to either answer them or pass them along to Mr. Voight for the February. If you have any questions for him.
Any questions?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
And up next, Ms. Schultz from the elementary school.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we're here on behalf of the elementary school. Short update for you, site-based leadership team. We are taking a little bit of time to review our holiday celebration practices within the elementary. No big changes on the horizon there, just making sure that we are providing equitable experiences for all of our students on what they celebrate. We are continuing to review our school improvement plan, strengthen our tier one practices, both for academics and our social and emotional capacities. During our PD, similar to Ms. Thompson's here, we had press training and also some vocabulary strategies that were reviewed. And for our late start, we reviewed our winter FAST data, and then we're able to kind of get some of those new intervention groupings. Which leads me into our winter FAST data review. For our kindergarten and first grade students, because they are simply the early math and early reading, the ranges are different than in our second and third grade. So they have three areas, low, some, and high risk for our first graders and our kindergartners. So we kind of look at our low and some risk, and then we really target the kids that are in our high risk. So for kindergarten, we have 98% of our students in that low and some risk, which is great. So just 2% of our students in kindergarten right now in that high risk range. So that's excellent. We're really able to target some of those needs with our intervention team. And for first grade, we have 90% in that low and some risk category for early reading. So that's 10% in our high risk. So that's getting into that about 17 or 18 students. So we still have the capacity within our inner team to meet those needs. And then the kids that are in that some risk are getting that class-wide intervention from the classroom teachers. For math in first grade, we're at 97% in that low and some risk for early math. So just 3% in that high risk range for our math kids in first grade. Second and third grade both saw some gains. A reading for our winter scores for second grade is at 73%. A math is 76%. And A reading for third grade is 74%. And A math is 8%. So trending in the right direction for sure. Second and third grade, we have more of those students in that high risk range. So that stretches our staff and our interventionists to make sure that we are really focusing in on what we need to do within that tier one level. And then providing additional supports through what we can when we do improve, doing some switching, some different ability and intervention groupings at the tier one level. Some highlights and successes. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to our targeted services teachers. We run a study buddies program on Monday evenings for our students . It's right after school for about an hour and a half. Teresa Langton, Sarah Beck, and Ellen Coons are our teachers for that. And they have started right from the beginning of the year, right after MDA, and they make those kids and really give them a good extra scoop of all things school, but with a little bit of fun. So I appreciate your time and attention to that. Like to honor our parent professionals this week. We are celebrating them with treats and hugs and lots of love, just to show our appreciation for them. Not just this week, but always. So we are very grateful for what they do for us in our school. It is, the Winter Medallion has been found. Our Health and Wellness Committee put on a Winter Medallion hunt. This is the third year in a row that they've done that, just to get families out together, outside. Molly Graham puts together some clues, and then we send those out in a blast. And it was found by Lexi and had the all top. So that was fun news today at our school. Family Reading Night is going to be February 22nd at the elementary school. And that is kind of compiled in with all things I love to read during the month of February. And a very high note is that we are pretty much fully staffed finally. It is January, but it happened. So we just are short a little bit of paratime the afternoon, but we have a wonderful parent professional some that shows up every day. And she has been a really big asset for us. So it's great to be fully staffed finally. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Business manager, Ms. Reader.
Holly Strife, our new accountant for the district, started last Monday, January 15th. We're very happy to welcome her to our team. And then once teacher negotiations are complete, I'll do a comprehensive budget revision for the current year and put together the five-year projection plan. And so more details to follow on that. And then the district will be requesting lawn mowing proposals for the summers of '24 and '25. So I'm going to be putting an ad for those proposals in the February 9th and 16th editions of the Herald Journal with proposals due by March 8th, and they'll be approved at the March, or February, March board meeting. Any questions?
That's right. We might be mowing lawns by March, so.
Well, it is an early meeting in March, so we should be good.
Any questions for Ms. Reader? All right, moving on to community ed. Mr. Erdlison.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thanks for having me here for Sockwood Community Activities. I'll be relatively brief. You know, we hit the new year. All of our activities start rolling into kind of routine play. And we're about a week and a half before it gets busy again. So as our activities move into kind of lining up their conference schedules, first week of February, we start section play. So that first week, girls hockey advanced will begin. The second week, we roll right into wrestling and gymnastics, followed by boys hockey, girls basketball, and swimming. And before you know it, we're going to be looking at boys basketball going to playoffs as spring sports starts. So they get, and kind of as we finish up our conference schedule here at the end of January, it gets really busy from here on out. So things will start momentum. We'll have momentum. We've had some success with some of our programs, so you can expect to see some home games. We have two basketball teams right now, both running to the top five in the state. So we'll be able to watch those teams play at home here come playoffs. So that would be good. We've talked recently about our AAA award winners, Ben Kelly and Eric Kazin. Well, this weekend, they're going to go down to Gistavis, where our region recognizes all the winners from the school districts within our region. And they select two winners, a male and a female, to represent the region that state. So I just want to point that out, that they'll be down there. It's a nice event that we do in our region. It's not as common, but it's a nice event. They go down, there's a meal, there's a program. It's a nice way to recognize those. And then after that, the region winners who will represent our region that state will be announced. On the community ed side, you know, our planning just kind of continues going. So we will open up preschool registration the first week of February. And our coordinators are busy working on the summer brochure. We've changed our timeline. So when I first got here, we moved our timeline up from, you know, towards the end of April to the first of April, to try and get our information out quicker. We have backed that up another month now. So we are going to have all of our information brought together by March 1st. So our summer brochure should be coming out three to four weeks earlier than previously. That gives our families more time to plan. Our coordinators take pride when our brochure's in the mail and then other district brochures come to us. So they take pride in that of beating the other districts out there. So the goal here is to get our information out a full month earlier, which will be, put us a really good timeline, give parents plenty of time to plan for summer. So. Things to note, ski club is up and running. Coordinator Ronkey has over 90 participants in that, so we're running two different buses now. So that's great. Those are really good numbers. And then I wanted to shout out, you know, we're running a little bit thin in the activities department right now. And I just wanted to publicly thank Julie Strobel, our administrative assistant, as well as I brought in coordinator Kim Finn on the facility side and Chris Ronkey. So as we look at activities and we're looking at our facilities and planning, we're doing that as a bigger team. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for stepping up as well. So if there's any questions in regards to community ed or activities, I can take those up this time.
Board reports. Masico.
Yeah, I attended Masico. It was a pretty standard, lighter agenda. But the main thing to highlight is we had one of our coordinators come in and talked about the programs that they're serving. So the coordinator that is in charge of the DAP programming, but also Journeys and Trek, as well as STEP, all within the actual co-op center in Howard Lake. And it was just really fun to hear about some of the things that those different programs have going on. Journeys is a, is a level three behavioral program. So typically those students tend to have to stay in the classroom. But over the course of this year, they were able to provide some flexibility and actually earned an incentive trip where they got to go to the movies. That was a huge accomplishment for those students. And then the STEP program, they were able to secure positions at the Culvers in Buffalo. So there's a couple of those students that are now going over to Culvers and, and just getting that real-life experience and work experience to prepare them. These are the students that tend to stay in the program up until 20, 21 years of age. And then they're either then able to go live independently in a group home or, and in some cases, work. So this is just great to see them getting some of these additional opportunities. So otherwise, all the rest of the more mundane board stuff is all posted if you'd like to take a peek.
Any questions for Amy? All right, moving on to student board reports.
I'm all like to keep it short and brief.
I'll like to keep it short and brief. For elementary and intermediate, just kind of getting back in the swing of things after winter break, wrapping up FAST testing, and now moving into I Love to Read Month, which will be exciting. And then with the high school, over the last couple of weeks, like I mentioned, the speakers went really well, really positive feedback. So I'm sure we'll see some more of those over the next months and years to come. FAST testing also was operated with 7 through 12, as Mr. Monkey, or 7 through 10, sorry, Mr. Monkey mentioned. And then just continuing to look at that survey we conducted and kind of analyze that information more with Mr. Voight. But again, as Mr. Monkey mentioned, those classes that we have as requirements will surely cover a lot of those bases, I think many of the results touched on, which will be good to see. Overall, just brief month, yeah, we're looking forward to Winter Fest in February. Any questions?
Any questions for Sophie? All right, thank you. Moving on to Old Business. First up is to approve the Second Read of Policy 413, the harassment and violence policies. We discussed it last month, and we have a motion to approve Policy 413. So moved. Motion by Jim, second by Sarah. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And following that is 12B, approve the Second Read of Policy 416, Drug and Alcohol Testing, also something went over last month. Do we have a motion to approve Policy 416?
So moved.
Motion by Cory, second by Amy.
Yep.
Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business. Up first is to approve the 24, 25 school calendar. We've discussed this in work session, we've also talked with Mr. Shane about it. Any motion to approve the calendar? That's where I'm at.
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, do we have any further discussion on the school calendar? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then up after that is to approve the calendar for the 25, 26 school year, so not this year, but next year. We've also gone over that. Do we have a motion to approve the 25, 26 calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And next up, 13C, approve surplus property to be sold, recycled, or disposed of. Do we have that list up there somewhere?
There's a small list of items that came from the high school that they're looking to get rid of. Some desks that originally they wanted to be able to donate to Wright Tech, but they're unable to use them, but they're still just sitting in storage. A roll of artificial turf that we had used for the project in the courtyard in the high school, the Ease section. So we had one roll left, and then an old stereo system without speakers.
Do you know how big the roll is?
I don't, but Barry Voight would.
I'll send you a note.
Okay.
And Jim wants the stereo system.
You do.
As long as there's no speakers.
There are no speakers.
Super popular.
Just a small list of items. So bizarre.
With that super-popular list of items going up, do we have a motion to approve the surplus items to be sold, likely recycled, or disposed of?
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Cory.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion passes. I thought it was a roll call vote for a second. And Public Comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name and address for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by speakers at this time. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment? And if they're here for public comment, with that seeing none, we will move on. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan, second by Jim. We are adjourned.